September 29th, Planning Board Meeting to Order. And then.
Pat, I found the.
Okay, so Charlotte, you're going to read this?
Okay, this is rules for the virtual Zoom meeting. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the opening meeting law, GL 30A Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the September 29th, 2020 public meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to the meeting should be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Two, real-time public comment can be addressed to the Planning Board using the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the Chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. A, Zoom login instructions. Instructions in the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found at the following web address. HTTP colon backslash backslash WWW FALMITH MASS DOT U S backslash 1112 backslash Planning Board. Two, please plan on 10 to 15 minutes of preparation time to log in, though it may be less if you have previously used Zoom on the device you'll use to access. Additionally, public comments may be sent in advance of the meeting to the Planning at to an email address, planning@falmithmass.gov at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files may also be submitted via email. Submitted email comments and documents will be made part of the meeting record and may be read into the record summarized or displayed during the meeting at the discretion of the Chair. I think that's all of that that we needed to read, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, yeah. For tonight, it is for sure. Okay, the next on the agenda is the minutes and since Paul still hasn't gotten his internet operating, we would need to delay this.
I'll move to table the minutes until Paul is back on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So then we go into the main meat of tonight's meeting. Planning Board discussion and Tom has asked for five minutes to bring us up to date on the zoning bylaw recodification.
All right, and may I report also that we received no emails prior to the meeting regarding tonight's so any comment other than folks who will be through chat. So we have had, you have gotten in on your front porch, a notebook. It doesn't look like your notebook with the recodified zoning bylaws in it. In order to make your tax dollars not at work so much, I went down to a storage room and found a lot of empty binders and punched holes in them and put the bylaws in there because they're sort of large. So there's interesting tabs on the end of it, but it's not really the financial information from 2014. It's the recodified bylaw. So there are several sections in there. There is the crosswalk. There is the strike and bold track changes section of the recodified bylaw. And then there are the sections to be deleted from the bylaw. In addition, in the front cover, there is a discussion about Phase Two for the bylaw and some other things identifies topics that. In having a number of conversations with both Bob Ritchie, Bob Mitchell, and Frank Duffy, we've been talking about the town meeting approach for recodifying. The zoning bylaw has gone beyond the scope of strictly recodifying because as we got into it, it's sort of like a renovation on a house. You find things that are inside the wall that you've got to fix. So there are some other things that we need to fix in there and we'll get into that broader discussion at our meeting that I have proposed to discuss this on October 20th, where Town Council will be able to be in place.
My birthday.
Mary's birthday.
We're always trying to make people feel special here as best we can.
I thought it was punishment.
So regarding the schedule for recodification, I'm just going to share my screen briefly here. This is the tentative schedule for recodification. It includes tonight's requested action. With the Planning Board authorized the distribution of the schedule. Authorized the distribution of the materials and the schedule for recodification. As you can see, we didn't have a spell check on this spreadsheet. So tonight with the Board's approval, we will distribute the information you've gotten in your packets to the members of the engineering, architectural, legal firms for their review and comment. We would essentially have about a 30-day comment period, although that's sort of an informal sort of mechanism. As we open the hearings, that's an opportunity for folks to comment as well. We like to get this information out to people ASAP, so they'll have it, an opportunity to look at it, consider the things that they work with on a pretty regular basis and hopefully give us back some feedback prior to us advertising and going to the hearings as well. So with that, we would look at having a larger discussion about where we're at technically with reviewing the bylaw through town meeting and with the anticipated discussion with the Attorney General that Bob and Bob have already had. So that would be on October 20th. We are looking at opening the hearings for the Planning Board on November 17th. November Town Meeting begins on November 16th and it has nine articles and is greatly anticipated that it will take one night to do town meeting for November. The reason for the October or November 17th date is we want to start this as early as possible after town meeting. We're trying to stay out of the weeds of the Thanksgiving week. So we would commence opening the hearing on 11/17 and continue to 12/1. Both Bob Ritchie and Bob Mitchell are available for those. In addition, I plugged in some of the other dates that the Planning Board, that the warrant typically happens. The only thing we know is town meeting will be April 12, 2021. That's the second Monday in April, as it always is. These other dates are set historically, the selectmen announced the warrant around the first week of December. It usually closes around that third Friday in January. And our goal would be to have the final text of recodified zoning bylaw available for the warrant at that point. We really don't want to have with all the moving parts of these things as many, as big as. We don't want to have a lot of different discussions on town meeting about motions to do things and change things. So our goal is to have the hearings, have the hearings closed and have the final draft in place prior to the warrant being closed in that third Friday in January. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from the Board about the proposed schedule and how we're moving forward with this. I didn't want to take too much time away from recodification, but I did want to make sure that the Board was understood what we're doing and comfortable enough with the process moving forward.
Does anybody have any questions or comments, Tom, at this point? Okay, one comment I would have is that builders have to deal with this too and they are not on the list of distribution. I think some of the major builders who deal with this probably should be given copies. Tom, you're muted.
Thank you. I don't know that I, that I shared that distribution list I had sent out earlier, but this is the list that we put together as far as attorneys, design folks and things like that. But we haven't many builders on it. Everyone has an emailed copy of this list. So if there are folks who think should get this information, we're giving them digital copies. This thing is 190 pages with all the attachments and we really don't want to print 190 pages times X number. So we'll be sending those digital copies.
That's fine.
Anybody is, get a copy, please email Planning or me and we will make sure we add them to the list for those folks getting them, getting copies of this.
Yeah, because I do not see builders on this list and I think they need to be. John, I think you might agree with that.
Yes.
And.
John, do you know some builders?
I know some builders and I know at least one other architect who should receive this.
Yeah, just send me an email is the best way, but if you want to call and leave a message, that's fine as well.
Okay.
Is exhausting list as I can and like to get them all out as soon as possible in the process. So we don't leave any stones unturned.
Is.
Bob?
Is there any way we could advertise this for builders to contact the Planner's Office to get a digital copy?
We don't necessarily have a push notification to send out like a tweet or Facebook. We were having that question about doing that in the House. Will be on our website, we will be sharing with library as well. But if you've got a list that you use or have it at stuff when you're asking for people.
Okay.
Happy to put together an invitation list from any, any resources.
Okay, yes, Charlotte.
Okay, I have two comments. The first one is, I wondered, it's an unwieldy document. Pat and I have been deep into this for a long time. Most of you have and certainly the people on the list have not. And it's very difficult to absorb that amount of information, particularly from a digital copy. It could be that people will print out one for themselves, 190 pages, mine is 150. That's pretty uphill. Is there any possibility, given the limitations with COVID, to have a couple of copies in the meeting room on the first floor of Town Hall with some times that people could come and look at those copies? I don't know if that, the health people would approve of that or not, but it would be one way around that. And the other, you could just think about it, you don't need to answer now. And the other, the other thing I wanted to say is, Tom, thank you very much for the print copy. It's a terrific help, I really appreciate it and see what a difference it makes to have it in print.
Regarding access to Town Hall, we are having those ongoing discussions about when Town Hall is going to open. There are stickers on the floor, there are hand sanitizers all over the place. We've been talking about it at least every other week and anticipate that Town Hall will be open sometime soon-ish.
Oh. Tom, you froze. Okay.
Set something up like that perhaps in the CPC room to have a copy there. We're, folks go look at that.
So the library is currently open, so it's potentially possible. And I don't know under what parameters they're working that a copy could be in the library.
Pat, couldn't it be online?
On our website.
I mean, people can then access it from their home rather than going into a place they may not be comfortable. Then they'll have to take notes and everything else.
It will absolutely be on our website, absolutely.
Okay, Pat.
Jim?
Yes, I'm aware of a list of builders that the building department sends out all notifications to. I'm on it. I think that would be an excellent list to hit everybody on it. They, they're the ones that get the agendas, it'll hit everybody, kind of a shotgun approach.
You see Tom with his thumb up.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm assuming then Tom will take care of that from your suggestion, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, now let's go back because Paul has been able to rejoin us. Paul, Charlotte read the original stuff, but I need a motion to go back to the minutes.
Some of.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Paul, we have the minutes of September 22nd.
I apologize, my internet kicked out. I couldn't get on initially and then when I got on, it cut, couldn't reconnect. So I finally figured it out. I'm sitting right next to the modem, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
I received no comments on the minutes of September 22nd. So bearing none from the committee members, I have reviewed them and I will send them out tomorrow. They are finished. I recommend approval of the minutes of September 22nd, 2020.
Oh.
Okay, so moved to second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we get on to the meat of the meeting, just 15 minutes later than we had planned on, which is the multifamily bylaw and it's written up as the committee report. But you've all had the information in front of you and what we're looking at is a discussion of what was presented. We have from Michaela, she put together comment, comment sections to the zoning bylaw, which is the common elements that are found in bylaws. We had Bob Ritchie's description and Charlotte and I are quite familiar with all of the tenants that he has put forth because this is what was being used for the recodification. And right now, to put this bylaw together, we're working between two different bylaws. The one that has not been voted yet by town meeting, but the one that we have in front of us. So what we're going to be doing tonight is discussing the draft of the multifamily rental housing bylaw. And anybody, yes.
Would it be helpful if I put the bylaw on the screen?
Sure.
I, well, then we lose people if you put the bylaw, if you screen share and you put the bylaw or the, the parameters that we're looking at on the screen.
Would, would it be helpful in lieu of losing the people to just very quickly go over the main points of the bylaw? Just so the people who may actually be members of the public tuned in. Just so the people would know the main points.
That is fine. Charlotte, do you want to do that since you brought it up?
I'm willing to, yes, but sure.
John? Well, somebody's got to do it who's very familiar with it, I think.
I'd be glad to do it or John would, we had a subcommittee, the sub, we've been discussing this as a planning board for three years at a minimum. So it's not new to any of the members of the Planning Board. But in order to move it forward, Pat formed a subcommittee a few weeks ago, John Drooly, Jim and myself, in order to get something on paper that we could now begin moving forward toward acceptance. And John Drooly was chosen as our Chair. So maybe, John, you would want to do that.
You want me to go through the, the highlights of what's being proposed?
Yeah, please.
Well, we all have it in front of us, the two pages. And I don't know the highlights or the purpose or the requirements.
I can have them up in a second if you'd like to have them up for a couple of minutes and we can take them down.
If you'd like to do that, Tom, then that would be easier for those who are viewing. But when we start the discussion, I think it's easier if we can see each other. Okay, John, if you'd like to continue with the highlights as you see them.
So, well, we'll just go right through the list. We have the definition, which is residential housing in which three or more separate housing units are contained within one building or within several buildings in one complex. And as far as applicability, we've discussed, and these are for discussion this evening. Having this in B1, B2, and business redevelopment zoning districts. In other words, we would, we feel we should have this rental housing in a location where the citizens of Falmouth want it to be. Purpose is to incentivize developers to build multifamily dwellings and for property owners to also improve their properties and have a second source of income. And the requirements, we have 16 requirements. So I, we'd have to read them off individually, but I'd like to go through it when we get to that, get to it, to go through it point by point and how we got to this as a committee.
Okay. As I said, we're working betwixt and between. And the old bylaw has dwelling defined. The new bylaw has multifamily dwelling defined. And the one thing we, to go betwixt and between, now we've got definitions. Remember, Charlotte, how they were buried throughout?
Yeah.
The two bobs took them out, so the whole definition system, situation is greatly expanded in the recodification. So what would not be covered at all, we'd have to look at the wording so it's in conformity, but what would not be covered at all is, or within several buildings in one complex. That was not envisioned when they were discussing multifamily housing. So that would have to be added to the definition and probably I would suggest it should be added to the definition in the recodifier.
Pat, may I make a request?
Of course.
I realize that, that there are technicalities here that are going to have to be ironed out. And I'm assuming that once the Planning Board has agreed on the substance of the, of the bylaw, it will go to the Planning Department and to the, the Legal Department for that to happen. So I'm hoping that tonight we will be able to not get deep into technicalities, but be able to look at the main provisions and see if we are in agreement among the seven of us on the Board.
That's fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, the big one, one of the big ones will be the districts that are being proposed. That's one of the big ones. And when you look at the districts, should it be as by right in all three of those districts? If we decide to go that way, or should it be done as an overlay district? So those are really two very large discussions for tonight, I think. So which would the committee prefer to have discussed first?
The district.
The districts, okay. So we've got B1, B2, and business redevelopment zoning districts. To my knowledge, we've only got business redevelopment zoning in almost that one piece along Main Street and in Woods Hole where Longfellow is wanting to build a complex there. B1, I understand, is on Main Street, both in Falmouth Center and in Woods Hole. Are there any other B1s?
No.
I didn't think so, but I'm checking in case something is escaped.
It's a very narrow part of Falmouth Center. It's the part, what B1 allows that nothing else in business allows is for the buildings to be built right up to the sidewalk and to touch one another, have no spaces between the buildings. So if you picture downtown where that's true, where the sidewalk and the building meet and the buildings touch one another, that's the B1 district downtown and in Woods Hole. They're very small districts.
Okay. And then B2, there's a little bit of B2 in every district, in every village.
Yes, but I think something I would like to point out because it was confusing to me. It happens that on the town zoning map, the business districts are all marked in red. So unless you look very carefully, which I didn't initially, you miss the fact that there's a B3 district. And that B3 district is not being included here at all. We're not asking for that. So the, the B2 districts that are in North Falmouth, West Falmouth, T-Ticket, East Falmouth, Wacoit, I hope I haven't missed any, and, and downtown from Gus Canty up to where McDonald's is. The, the B2 districts are all on 28, except for one small district that's up on 151.
Okay, okay, we have discussion on this. Bob?
But aren't the B3s in the village centers of West Falmouth and North Falmouth on 28A?
Um, no, the B3s in North Falmouth are on Old Main Street, the corner of County Road and Old Main.
Yeah.
The B2 district is one block up from that on the corner of 128 and 28A, 151 and 28A.
Okay, does anybody on the Board have any feeling about whether you want to have all three of these in? Or John had originally proposed B2 alone, I believe. So I'm looking for how the Board feels about that. Okay, Jim?
Well, I'm the one that's been pushing the B1, only because I know of many properties on Main Street that don't make any sense with our current zoning. Their second and third floors are totally vacant. But I'm also aware that Eric Turkington has supposed this position strongly. But I will agree to disagree on that, but there might be a compromise that we look for an intermediate solution on the B1 because it's really a problem on six units per acre. If you look at some of these buildings that have three floors on them and their second and third floors, if you tried to build them out for residential units, they'd have to be 2,000 to 3,000 square foot units to make, because you can only put three of them on the floors. So there's something fundamentally wrong with our zoning. Maybe there's a high-bred virgin for B1 in order to bring Eric so he doesn't oppose us at town meeting on this. Maybe there's a compromise there. Or maybe we have to forget B1 because he'll just swing it away because he'll probably do that. But when I originally started working, or when I originally started working on this, it was to solve problems downtown because there's some pretty crazy buildings that have vacant space on their second and third floors.
We've heard Jim make that comment multiple times. Bob?
Yeah, I, I really think we should push for B1. I mean, we just can't let one, one person's opinion push us away from that because it, there is, that's where we want to be putting people down in the villages. And like Jim says, there's plenty of space to do that. And it's a shame to leave all that vacant space when it could be utilized. And if it's with the local comprehensive plan.
John?
I would like to say that, first of all, I don't like to single any one individual out because Mr. Turkington has been over the top helpful with me getting this far with his bylaw. And I don't want to have him or any, any other person singled out as being against it or for it. This is a bylaw for the whole town and we're the town's representative, so we need to discuss this. But we don't need any name-calling or pointing any individual out as being an obstacle or being in support of it. I, I don't appreciate that. He's been extremely helpful and I don't think that's fair to talk, to talk about him openly in a public meeting. So we should just talk about what we want as a committee and what's right for this town and let it go from there.
Thank you.
I'm very, I'm very much in support of B2. I felt all along that B1 could be added later on if this gets approved by town meeting. And that's where I stand on it.
Charlotte?
I'm, I'm hoping that we will do as Jim and Bob are saying, that we'll keep B1 in at least to public hearing so that it goes beyond the Planning Board on the, the vocalization of what reactions might be and to keep. And to keep open a possibility, I think there's a big difference between, in my mind, we're going back to sort of original causes, we're supposed to be preserving the character of the town. That's one of our overriding, uh, uh, principles here on the planning board. The, the character of Woods Hole Village and downtown are quite different. They're very different. Woods Hole is much tinier, it's much more fragile, the buildings are actually smaller. It's very distinct in character. It could be that we could find a way to, uh, have it B1 but exclude the more fragile area there. And that might make it more possible to bring multifamily rental housing to downtown Falmouth. It'd be too bad to lose that option.
Tom?
I was going to say, back in January, when we first started talking about this, I did some mapping of, uh, B1, B2 for multifamily, uh, and I still have most of those maps saved. One of the things we always talk about in creating zoning are unintended. So we might want to take those maps and go back and look at specifically what sort of acreage, what sort of, how many opportunities there are for something like this. And if it turns out that there is, if someone has a concern that if we do this, it's going to blow up this whole area. And if we can show, well, that area has.
Tom, you froze up.
I'm suggesting that I'll bring mapping.
So we could wait on, not decide right now.
Okay, I'm going to go to Pam since you froze up again, Tom. Pam?
Well, I just think that we know what the need is here in town. And I think, I don't, I don't want to exclude B1 because that has been an area that we know people can access public transportation, stores, it's walkable. Putting people who have limited resources out in the wilderness somewhere is never a good idea. You know, we want families to come into town. And I think we just need these, this zoning that can accommodate various parts of town that have their own unique, um, characteristics. And I think that B1, um, fits in, you know, just as well. I think the fragility of the town, especially with climate change, is going to be a critical issue here. Where do we build? How far from a water's edge? How far from a vulnerable area? And Woods Hole is an amazingly vulnerable area. So I think we just have to be very careful and, you know, work with whatever developers we get to, um, create these affordable housing units.
Jim?
I just want to point out there, there are, or there are at least two areas on downtown that are B3. They're very small, but they are but B2. They go from, uh, I'm, I'm familiar with it because they're properties I'm involved with. I do some property management on them. But they're kind of like Main Street, Catherine Lee Bates, the northern, the northern end. The same, like, the, the block that has Hennus Jewelers and, and, uh, Cape, or the Federal Savings, that's B2 in the front and B3 in the back on the far end. So we may do a little, I just want to correct, it's not, there are some B3s that may, should be rezoned to B2 to be part of this program. Couple smaller places that are downtown, public transportation, and they're just, I don't know why they're B3s, but they are.
Okay. Then I, I'm going to point out a little bit of an internal conflict here with the definition. And if we put all these business zones in too, because the definition simply says for housing units. If we go into the business districts, um, we're going to have problems because a lot of them have first-floor businesses. So we have to rethink the definition to incorporate that. There's also another way of taking care of the problem of where we're putting it. And this re- requires, I think, some more definition here as to what's good and what's bad. We can simply put these by right into these zoning districts, or they can be done by overlay districts. So that we cut out areas that we want, would like to see these developments in. Charlotte?
I think when John starts going through the requirements, you see that, um, that, uh, multi, multi-use, mixed use of commercial, professional, and housing. So the title is multifamily rental housing because that's the new element. Maybe it should be differently titled, but one of its key, uh, requirements, features, is that it's mixed use. Now, business redevelopment is already mixed use, but that would be new for, um, new things going into B1, um, and B2.
I know. Tom was saying you've got to be careful of unintended consequences. The definition cuts out business use. So we're going to have to put this as a specific new definition that will allow business use on the first floor of mixed use in this way. So this is why I'm pointing it out. You've got to broaden the definition, I think, to incorporate that.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're going to have conflict that people will fight about. Well, you didn't allow it, so you can't by definition.
But one of my points, as we talked about, not to get too deep in the weeds, is to work on refining the definition.
Right.
Yep. So we want to refine it to meet whatever we decide on with those points of what we want to do. Okay? Um, does anybody think, I guess I want to put it this way, does anybody think that we're biting off too much if we have it B1, B2, and business redevelopment zoning districts? Does anybody think we're biting off too much by going in this direction with the first cut? Yeah, nobody's raising their hands.
Because they're small enough zones.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So that's defined. We want to go B1, B2, and business redevelopment. Okay.
Excellent.
Um, and then we're going to have to refine the definition to reflect the zoning districts. The purpose, I think, could potentially use some more work, obviously. Um, but the other thing is too, I'm not sure that we can have a wish list in purpose that dilutes it too much. And the bullet points are wish lists, I think, from my reading of it. Keep seniors and adult children in our community. Well, we hope it will, but it's not part of a bylaw, I believe. Um, meets the needs as shown in Falmouth's 2019 Housing Production Plan. Well, that's a goal, but I don't think it's part of a bylaw. Please stop me if you disagree. Meet the five-year strategic plan for community housing needs. Again, it's a goal. And maybe it can be incorporated in the purpose, but then when you look at, uh, Bob Ritchie, he said, you don't want to get too wordy. You want to be economical in what you're doing in a bylaw. Revitalize commercial centers by allowing mixed commercial and residential use. That is again a goal of the expanded definition. Stimulate mixed-use new construction and renovation of older buildings. That's a goal. Help reduce traffic congestion by reducing vehicle trips. Well, it's a goal. We don't know if it'll happen or not. So these bulletized points, in my estimation, are a wish list. Bob, you had a comment?
Yeah, it should be just, uh, to create housing for all.
Right.
Right. And that's in the purpose. Providing housing for people at all stages of life and all levels of income, separate from mandatory state statutory requirements. So that's a purpose.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any comments on this? John?
I just want to say that the reason those, those items are in there regarding seniors, the Housing Production Plan, five-year strategic plan, those plans all call for rental housing, not homeownership. This is what the, the town at every level feels that they need more rental dwelling units. So that's the only reason I added those in there, so people could understand what we're trying to accomplish. And the reason why we're trying to accomplish is not just our idea. This is what the town as a whole has been saying is lacking and is needed to keep our seniors here, have our, uh, adult children stay here because, uh, housing is not affordable for a lot of people anymore. So we're just, I just wanted to make those as part of the purpose. And the reason is because we need rental dwellings, units.
That, I think, can be restated as a very strong statement, maybe even the first one under purpose. Because that's what we're trying to do, multifamily rental housing bylaw. So I think that in redoing the purpose, that should be very strongly mentioned that all of the studies and plans that we have as a town of Falmouth say we're desperate need of rental housing. And the purpose is to start providing more rental housing for Falmouth. Charlotte?
Just, uh, wanted to, um, uh, say that it seems to me that a very strong purpose of this bylaw is to reach goals that the town has set for itself. And enumerating those goals is important. When you get too much packed into a paragraph, it's not evident to all the readers what you're trying to do. So this sort of unpacks some of those thoughts so that they're, they're more on the surface and can go along as part of the bylaw. So that as developers pick up on it and come before the planning board and they want to now explain why they're doing this, if they come and say, we really are reserving this for, uh, for seniors or for adult children or whatever, they could be using some of this language in order to, in effect, market it to the community and to us. I think it's useful to unpack the language a little bit. Getting it too concentrated, you lose a lot. And reaching our goals is our purpose.
Well, the first paragraph does need to be unpacked already. Remember that Bob Mitchell was doing a lot of that. And that does need to be unpacked. I'm going to make a suggestion, which you may or may not agree with, that a number of the bylaws have an introduction that does not leave much to the imagination. You have a purpose, but the introduction even restates it. And this could be done in an introduction. Also, Bob Ritchie's, um, information on how to create a bylaw, he said, you, you have to do something such as this to introduce it to town meeting so that they really understand what the purpose is of this. So I'm suggesting that this perhaps be put in an introductory paragraph to the bylaw and that it be used to very strongly introduce what we're trying to do to town meeting. I, come on, folks. John?
Well, there, there's three things that I was really trying to accomplish as I was going through this. And it's very difficult because there's a lot of hurdles to overcome. But I was trying to help create a bylaw that, uh,
You've frozen. Okay.
I'm trying to, I was trying to create a bylaw that allows for all of the dwelling units to be included in the 10% subsidizing subsidized housing inventory. And it, it's, we're not allowed to have just an apartment bylaw. It has to be a dwelling bylaw. So I, I tried to set it up so that it's profitable for the property owners, but also every, every unit that gets built is a rental and every one of them will count toward the town's 10% subsidized housing inventory. And also wanted to, this to be the town's own 40B. So the, the units would get built, not where people want to build them, but where the town wants housing to be built. So I tried to direct it to be B2 or B1 and also make sure that every unit counts toward the 10%. It's difficult to overcome that hurdle, but I, I feel strongly that we're very close and that we can do that. So.
Okay, Pam?
I agree with John. I mean, I think this is our opportunity. Um, we've had any number of individual homes that have been, quote, affordable through the trust. And I personally want to move away from that to the rental units so that every unit can go on the SHI. We can build toward our 10% and open this up to give families and whether they're new to Falmouth or they're here, but they're living with their parents or some ungodly way of living, um, that, I was a little facetious because, you know.
Tough say.
No, but I think it's really important and I want that message to get across at town meeting that this is for the good of the town. It's important. It's sort of a, I don't want to say a moral imperative, but I'll say a moral imperative, um, that we, this is how we need to look at them. I'm not interested. We've had so many single-family affordable homes, and I think that's great, but that's not. And I think this is a sort of an FYI for, um, for our community preservation money as well. And money that the town might have to put into these units because they're going to be really important and we have to start somewhere. And this is a, this is a beginning. And I think if we have it in various places in town, excuse me. Um, and I'm, I'm interested in what, we brought Carla onto the, into this conversation, right?
Yes.
Because I'm very interested in what Carla, um, you know, she's sort of the housing pro. So I'm interested in what she has to say as well. Not to put her on the spot, but put her on the spot.
One more little comment is that in the recodification, in many instances, the introduction is intent and purpose.
Right.
Okay, so we can break it down that the intent is to do these things and to make the SHI count more, that we get more units into the SHI. So I'm,
And that all units count.
Yes.
All dwelling.
Be the intent. Okay, so the intent is that. So I think we're challenging our professional staff and our three-member committee to work on that, to get it within the restructuring of the recodification and to make it work as we want it to in this introduction. Does that make sense to anybody?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the difference between intent and purpose.
Oh, I think we can work it out. It'd be good to get on to the requirements because that's the meat of it.
Yeah. Now, you wanted to know if Carla had any comments on this discussion we've had so far. Is that correct, Pam?
Yes.
Okay, so we would ask Carla if she would join us with some comments in regard to our discussion thus far. Carla?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes, we can.
Hi, I'm, I'm coming to you from a, from a smartphone. I don't know how smart it is, so I'm not sure if you're able to see me or hear me, but I guess you're able to hear me.
Hear you but not see you, Carla.
Okay. Oops, somebody's asked me to start my video. There I am.
There you are. Hi. I'm on a smartphone too, so I know it works.
Okay, hi. Um, well, thank you for elevating me to a panelist, whoever did that without my asking. I appreciate it. Makes me feel important. So I, I did provide some comments, um, about the SHI with respect to the multifamily bylaw. And, um, I guess what I wanted to show you was what all is required of a developer in order to get the units on the SHI. And there's town staff that have to review a lot of things, but for the most part, the developer has a lot of responsibility here. And there's a cost to that responsibility. And, um, to, to balance out the cost with the benefit, I think, um, you know, you'll have to be looking at, I think, you know, you'll have to be looking at the size of the development. I mean, certainly if you have a couple of units, it's probably not going to be worthwhile for the developer. To try to go through this and get units on the SHI. Whereas, you know, if they went through a comprehensive permit, they go through the same process, but they'd probably get greater density. And John, correct me when I'm wrong here. But, you know, I think you have to look at larger sized developments. To make it really worth the developers worthwhile because of all the costs involved with complying with state regulations. And these regulations are, you know, in effect, regardless of the town supplying any financing. Or any subsidy to the project. It's all about the affordability and the affordability in perpetuity. And that's, that's the key. That something is affordable in perpetuity and survives foreclosure. And to do that, there's a lot of documentation required.
May I ask a question of John? Because did you have in mind in perpetuity, John?
Yes.
Okay.
It's written in our documents.
Okay.
And, and I don't disagree with Carla that the larger the size, the more economically feasible this is. But as a developer, the difference between a comprehensive permit and what this by law says. Comprehensive permit, first of all, is difficult and time consuming. This is going to be written to be by right. And this does not have a profit limitation. Comprehensive permit has a profit limitation. And the, and the way this is written, these are not, these are dwelling units. So they can be apartments, they can be condominiums, they can be sold, the developer can sell. They, some of these units to help meet their expenses. There's a lot of advantages to this for a developer and a property owner, not just the developer. But a comprehensive permit doesn't allow. And I, I understand the, the cost that Carla shows on, on her memo to us. And there may be some small places that won't be worth it to them to do this. But I think the more opportunity we give property owners and developers. They'll figure it out and they'll make it work.
Okay, Bob?
John, you think there is enough incentive for developers to do this? Because when I read Carla's list from, of compliances that you need, I, I'm thinking to myself, boy, nobody's going to want to do this.
Right.
But you think there is enough incentive the way we will write this by law?
You see the guy on the screen right below you?
Yeah.
Ask, ask him. Jim?
I'm above him on my screen, so I don't know what you're looking at. No, but the whole thing and my involvement is this is to design it so that the, it's economically feasible actually to bring outside money in. And build the housing that we want where we want it without using our own money. And I think the density number is how to do it. And they're granted, 40Bs are really complicated, but the goal of this is not to make it all that complicated. And just have, because we have a lot of these smaller lots, here's the problem. Our main street, especially East Main Street, is made up of a lot of smaller lots. And the only way we could get them to build the big units that we're talking about would have them all assembled. But we don't really want that to happen. We've got to find a way to squeeze some, some more housing into the smaller lots that, that will maintain our character. If we don't, then they'll just assemble them into giant things and do redevelopment. And that's not what we're trying to do. There's got to be a, a way to get the extra density in there. Right now there's six units per acre and they're happening on some very small lots. They're trying to put twos and threes. If, if, if they could put 20 and they had a half acre, they could, they could try for 10. Now 10 may not fit, but they may fit seven. So there, there, we've got to give them, it's not a perfect world, but the idea is to incentivize them to add more density. Smaller units on the main road with public transportation. I don't want to just make it for the great big developments because those become more character changing. The massive developments and that's not what we're trying to do. We already have massive developments with nothing but parking lots, so there'd be an improvement on that. But it's all the smaller infill things that we're trying to actually give a little benefit to. And that was the intent. Maybe, maybe it's so hard, Carly's right, it can't be done. But they're sure trying hard to do it with the six units per acre right now. And I thought if we gave them a little help, it'd be easier.
Charlotte, you're muted, so unmute.
Couple of years ago, when first I joined the planning board, the Housing Assistance Corporation gave a, a multi-session. Tutorial for public officials and other people who were interested in how to get affordable housing into your. I think Pam, you went to that, didn't you? Several of us from Falmouth did. Carla, not sure whether you were here yet or not, you might have gone, but a lot of Falmouth people went. And one of the important nights was the night that the developers came to talk to people about what do they need in order to be able to, to do this? They would like to be able to do it, but they have to be able to make money on it. And one of the reasons we get so many condominium units going up is you can sell them and get your money back right away. A rental unit, you can't really do that. So to set up something so that you, you can sell some of the units as condominiums and those owners can rent them. Which this allows, but other laws don't. We, we've gotten around that in the way this has been drafted now. But one of the most important provisions here of this proposal is the 20 units per acre. Right now, as Jim said, six units per acre is what Falmouth allows. You have to go take a special route to bypass local zoning in order to do better than six units per acre. And it just doesn't pay. The developer said unless we get 20 units per acre, we're not going to be able to do it. So this is proposing in B1, B2 and the business redevelopment districts. That by right, they would be able to have 20 units per acre, up to 20 units. They don't have to have 20, but they can if they want to. They can if it works for the piece of land that they're on. So.
John?
20 units and those districts, those are the really, and by right, those are the big pieces of this.
Are they all, if you have a comprehensive permit. The developer dictates to the town what he or she wants to do. Under this by law, we have site plan review, we have design review with the planning board. And that's one of the things that we talk about all the time. We want to have some control. And will this fit on every, every B2 property? Will it work? Probably not. But it'll work enough that we're going to get a lot of dwelling units that will all be on the subsidized housing inventory. And it, it will meet two purposes at the same time.
Okay, so that we can move on with this because our time is moving on. We've got about a half hour left as to what we wanted to devote tonight. The requirements, we've already decided, number one, multifamily rental housing will be allowed by right in B1, B2. And BR zoning districts. And right now we haven't decided yet whether it's going to be by zoning or overlay. And that's not in here. That's a question that has to be determined yet. Number two, the maximum number of dwelling units in multifamily projects shall not exceed 20 units per acre. It sounded like everybody was pretty much in agreement on that, isn't it correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Number three, 25% of the multifamily dwelling units shall be affordable. That is occupancy shall be restricted to households earning at or below 80% of area median income. The term of affordability shall be in perpetuity or the longest term allowed by law. Any comments on that? In agreement or not, and it does look like we've missed, Paul has dropped off again. So you succeeded in being with us for a while. Yes, John?
This sentence is mandatory in order to meet the 10% to be on the list of the 10% SHI. This, this is a mandatory requirement.
Okay, so no discussion on this then at this point. Because we want these to be on the SHI. Number four, 100% of the dwelling units must meet the requirements necessary to be included in Falmouth subsidized housing inventory. That is regardless of ownership, all units shall be rental units. Any problem with that?
Can I expand on that a minute? And maybe, could I expand on that for a minute because it's not immediate evidence? You think, well, if we're trying to build developments that'll be big downtown. There are people who want to downsize and live downtown. And yet they like owning their own unit. So they would be attracted to a condominium. Nothing would stop you if you want a condominium from buying your unit and then renting it through, renting it back to yourself through a trust. So this allows for that. Doesn't preclude it.
It allows for it, but it's pretty costly.
Um, I don't know why, why would it be more costly Pam?
Because you have to get an attorney to draw up all these documents as far as I know. And maybe not.
I don't think that allows for that, but I think there's an opportunity, some people would take advantage of it. But this, if you own it, you're supposed to rent it to somebody else.
Say that again, if you own it, you have to rent it to someone else?
Not, it's not a condominium for you to live in, it's for you to rent out to somebody else.
As an investment property.
Exactly, it has to be a rental unit in order to count toward the 10%.
Right, yes, I know that, okay.
Okay.
Oh, and if I may, a rental, a rental unit that's rented to a qualified renter?
No.
No, 25%. 25% of the units.
Not 100% of the units, 25% of the units.
So that is why John said it's, that's why John said he's trying to create a Falmouth 40B.
So you're saying 75% of the units?
75% of the units are market rate.
Yeah, I got that.
25% would be deed restricted.
Okay. Carla?
Um, in a deed restricted unit, you're not allowed to rent it out to someone else. If it's ownership, it has to be your primary residence.
That would be 25% of the unit.
It's okay.
That's okay.
Okay?
And, and also if, you know, there's language about if you have a rental, you can't rent it out to anybody else either. You can't sublet.
That's in here too, I believe Carla, as one of the, and Jimmy, you wanted to say something?
What we're trying to preserve is the investment of buying into one, two, three, four units. You know, if they could find a way that they rent, they own five and somebody else owns five and the one rents from the other. That's, that's okay. But what we're trying to do is get investors to put money into our downtown areas, whether they both big and small. Not limiting it to giant investors, but local people some way would want to invest in. So we just give them, uh, maybe they can't rent their own, but they could still rent one in the development. There's got to be a way that we can do this. And that's what we're trying to do. If there isn't, there isn't, but that's our intent is to try to make it easier for smaller investors to put money into these properties. Because some of these lots aren't that big.
Okay, Paul is back with us. All right, we've got number five, all dwelling units will allow only year round occupancy and a minimum one year lease. Any discussion on that? Okay. All dwelling units shall meet Title V requirements. They may be connected to a sewer and if located in a coastal pond overlay district, shall be required to have denitrification. Any comments on that? Okay, I have one because if you're allowing up to 20 units per acre. You do have to have a reserve if you, on septic, on Title V. So it seems to me that a lot of these are going to be required to be on sewer to even start to exist. So I wonder why we're kind of waffling there? If we need to constrict this a little bit more or state it a little bit more plainly, Jim?
Well, the reason why is because we do have some B2 zoning in areas of town where they would fit nicely. The intersection of 28A and 151 has some B2 zoning. There's a big piece of land there that's for sale. And they have enough room to put in stores on the first floor, a giant septic system in, under the parking lot. And many apartments on this, the second floor. And it is in the village, it meets all other targets, but I don't think we're ever going to get the sewer there. So we're just trying to keep the door open for some of these village centers to actually have a little bit more housing. But they, it, it, it's going to be doubly hard because of the reserve factor. You're absolutely right, Pat. But that's okay, it makes it better for the neighborhood because that tones down the density for the neighborhood a little bit. But it gives them a chance to find a way to make the zoning, the development work.
John?
Yeah, as I said, it may not work on every location, but you know, with, as far as leaching fields go, now they have the Presby system. Which is smaller than a, a leaching field than a regular Title V area. There's, property owners would just have to work this out. But we have to, I'm just trying to give them the opportunity. And if it doesn't fit on their lot, it doesn't fit. But if it does and they want us, they want to invest the money, all the better for the town.
My comment means in my mind that this has to be more carefully stated. Because they can say, well, you just set a Title V and I can put a Title V here. And I don't know whether it can be put there safely, I guess would be the way I put it, that it will work for 20 years. Don't know.
We could put some language in there that includes the border health if you want.
Yeah, it has to be more carefully worked out from my point of view. And Pam has been involved in this kind of thing a lot too. Jim?
We already have any subdivision with more than five units, the planning board has the right to make them do a denitrification system. So we already have a, some control on that already. So I, I think John is right, we should incentivize people to come up with creative Title V systems that can fit and make them work. And that's, this will do it.
Maybe.
I hope so.
I'm skeptical.
It'll hurt.
I, I just have, I'm just curious because I, you know, I've dealt with this a lot. But any talk about the possibility in some of these areas of putting in a sewage treatment plant? You know, a package plant to just accommodate the units that would be built?
It would have to be a lot of units.
Round figures about 200 units to justify a package plant, very round.
No, 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 no. I mean, there are package plants, sewer treatment plants for many, many fewer units than that. So, I mean, I, I, I know that because I came from a place that had many of them. Because the sewage was so limited or sewer-ing. But I, I'm just wondering if that's a possibility? Because it would certainly allow for a lot more units to be built if they couldn't go on our sewer.
Right. Jim?
Well, I, I wanted to point out that the, the, the requirements, I, I, I don't know the numbers, maybe it's 10,000 gallons. But as soon as you get to a certain level of gallons per day, it requires a full-time engineer running the plant. And that's really cranks up the cost. And that's why the package units, why we've moved away from them. And at one time Falmouth was planning putting pack units everywhere, that's the way we were going to do it. Remember there, there was going to be with the, in the, the, the T ticket area, we, we were planting them. And then they, they went away because they just, they were too expensive and couldn't handle, handle the volume. So.
Okay. Well, so this is just saying we need a closer look at it, okay?
Sure.
Number seven, all multifamily projects will provide a minimum of one parking space per unit. Plus three guest parking spaces per complex or shared parking arrangements secured by written agreement. Anybody have any comments on that?
Can we add something about offsite or shared parking?
Just did.
That's what it says, or shared parking arrangements by secured written agreement.
Okay, I missed that, sorry.
Okay, Jim?
I think we have to put a per acre number on that because you wouldn't want a 10 acre parcel only to have three shared parking spaces. You know, there, there, there has to be a, or, or visitor parking spaces.
So you want to have. You want to have, put a more logical number on it.
Well, maybe three per acre or some other cap. So somebody with 10 acres can't just put three. Well, maybe three per acre or some other cap. So somebody with 10 acres can't just put three, three visitor spots in and, and satisfy it.
Okay, so look at adding. Guest. By acreage.
It should be by so many dwelling units.
Yeah, by 20 units, for every 20 units. Which also works out per acre. So yeah, something like that. I like John's method per unit.
Per unit, I do too. So that's what I've got down. Look at adding guest. Parking by dwelling.
For every 20 units, they have to have three.
Yeah. Okay.
Good.
Number eight, all multifamily projects will have not more than 2.75 stories. And a maximum height of 35 feet. Any problem with that? Okay. Nine, multifamily projects will be subject to existing lot coverage in zones B one, B two and BR. Any problems? Okay. 10, multifamily projects will be subject to existing setbacks in zones B one and BR zones. Setbacks in the B two zone will be the same as zone BR. I have not looked at that with any detail. Does anybody, Jim?
I, I, there might be another clause later on that says if both properties are the same zoning, then the setback doesn't apply. Like on sideline setbacks.
Say that again?
If. Like, like Falmouth Plaza, they have three different owners. They may not, you don't, if it's all zone B two, so zoning to zoning doesn't need a special setback. Doesn't need one.
What you're looking at is contiguous properties.
Right.
Okay.
So that would allow them to be treated, little properties to be treated like they're bigger and not forced to be broken up. Or, or combined, excuse me.
So that's going to have to be amplified.
I think it's in there someplace later on. I, I, I believe there's something in there like that.
I don't recall seeing that, but we'll see. Number 11, multifamily projects must provide sidewalks on site.
I think it depends on the size. I, I don't think everything needs sidewalks. I, I think it's ideal in some, in some ways, but then you've got this more previous material. With a sidewalk and uh. I think it depends on how large the development is.
Well, remember where, remember where we're trying to put these though. They're going to be sidewalks there anyway.
Right, on the main roads, but if you remember those areas. Um, around uh, was it Rose Court?
Right.
On the main roads, yeah.
Well, they're off of main roads.
Yeah, but what we're talking about here is just on the main road. There are already sidewalks there.
Okay, okay, then never mind.
But the sidewalks can be in various conditions. So you, what you're, I think maybe looking at is upkeep of the sidewalks in front of. Where the units are, but I don't know that for a fact. Jim?
I think we should keep it in, just like we do in a subdivision. And have the right to waive it in appropriate places that have solved the problem, just like we do in our subdivisions now.
Okay, that's fine. That works for me.
Tom?
Yeah, uh, you can't.
You, you froze. Can't hear you, Tom. You're all frozen up.
Then I'll talk to you tomorrow.
When you, call us when you defrost, okay?
Yeah.
Been like, been like this all day. I don't know what it is.
Yeah. 12, increased density allowed by the town of Falmouth. Meets the DHCD subsidy requirement for housing to be added to the subsidized housing inventory. John?
Uh, the, DHCD requires a town subsidy. And it could be in the form of uh. Of money from CPC funds. Or other, other forms, but the increased density will count as the subsidy that DHCD would require.
Oh. Okay. Should that be spelled out more, John? Since certain developers may not have any idea about that.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Remember last week when we talked a little bit about some of the. Other developments in Falmouth housing developments that are being finished up. And they've received taxpayer funding to the tune of about $5 million. And this will allow dwelling units, rental dwelling units to be developed without any outside funding. We don't need any other subsidies. The density is the subsidy.
So you think this is sufficient unto itself, the way it is?
I, I know it will be.
Thank you. 13, DHCD, the town or a local agent approved by the planning board. Will monitor and oversee all multifamily rental dwelling units.
And this is what Carla was talking about.
Right.
You have, you have to have oversight. And the larger projects will be easier, but it doesn't mean it will be impossible for the smaller one.
Does the town have an agent for oversight at this point? I believe we do not.
We do not.
Does this then require the town to hire somebody, John? Or how does this happen?
No, the, whoever the property owner is will have to take care of this. And, and I feel that right now it's difficult, but the more units that get built. Not only in Falmouth, but other parts of the Cape. Someone will make a business out of this and it'll work. There's already people doing it.
Yeah, there are, just not in Falmouth right here, I assume.
Right.
Okay, so that again. Should be um, the agent should be.
It's mandatory.
I understand that, but the agent then should be known and approved by the planning board, do you think?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so that should be probably added to that. Uh, 14, the application shall be subject to site plan and design review approval by the planning board. I think that's where we've been going a lot lately. Okay. Um. 15, the planning board shall be the sole special permit granting authority for any relief pursuant to any provision of this bylaw. Planning board approval of a special permit under this section. Shall not substitute for approval of a subdivision or approval not required plan. Any problems with that? John?
So our discussion as a, as a committee was that. This is not going to be a special permit. It's going to be. A by right permit. I think we forgot to take that word out of there when this got typed up.
Okay. So does this whole thing come out?
Just the word special.
Okay, so we want to take out the word special. In both areas, there are both sentences there. Okay. And 16, this bylaw will have a sunset provision of 10 years. Why is that? I was curious about that.
The, the discussion was that. This may produce enough housing rental dwelling units. That we meet the 10% and the town doesn't want to become all apartments overloaded with apartments. So if this is really effective and we meet our, we meet our goals. This would give town meeting an opportunity to let it just. Go away from the books or they could. Pass it again in 10 years.
Okay, do you want to give any direction to that, that um. That a vote of town meeting can continue this bylaw or just leave it sunsetted period?
Well, I think they should be able to uh. Re-up the bylaw on 10 years if they, if they choose to.
That would be a town meeting action though.
Yes, it would be.
Okay, Tom?
Certain. It's a bylaw until it's not a bylaw. That you can't sunset it. It will be there until town meeting removes it.
Okay, so then we probably need to take away sunset. This bylaw shall be reviewed for its effectiveness by the planning board in 10 years. If you want to have it looked at in 10 years. Because then the, the um. Planning board, as we do with bylaws occasionally, asks town meeting to remove it. Does that work, Tom?
I'll put a sticky on the wall.
Jim?
I just want, Tom, you might want to just shut off your video and see if you can get away with just audio so you won't freeze up. It'll take your bandwidth away. But we'll hear you.
I will try that.
Okay. Oops. Didn't do it, Jim. He froze again. Okay. Well. There you, didn't do it, did it, Tom? Okay. So we've now gone through everything. Next steps, Charlotte?
Um, I wasn't ready for next steps, but I wanted to ask a question. Um, actually of um, Frank Duffy, the. The state passes laws that have sunset provisions. Are municipalities not allowed to?
That's correct.
So we'd have to have some other mechanism. To. Allow town meeting to know that the planning board is going to oversee this for its effectiveness. If we want to keep this in there. John?
Again, I only put it in here for, for that reason, but also was I, I put it in there for discussion by our board. Maybe it's not even a good idea. Maybe it is a good idea and I think it is for discussion, not just to say we should do it or not do it. But as a board, I think we should discuss whether, I, I like the idea of 10 years and the planning board reviews it again. I like that idea. Uh, but if we don't need to have any language in there at all, that's fine with me also.
Well, you could say the planning board shall review this bylaw every 10 years or every five years.
I would like to at least do 10 years. It's going to take a while for this to catch on.
Yeah, I think absolutely that's true. Okay, Tom gave us a message here. Um. So we, we need to know where, we've got four minutes till this coach turns back into a pumpkin. Um. Where do you want to go from here? Do you want to have the staff? Try to form a bylaw out of it and then we look at it again. In the fullness of a bylaw context. Do, does the committee want to bring it back and work? Bylaw, John?
I would prefer that our committee uh try to draft a, a bylaw. And then let the staff review it and make good comments and then come back to the board with what we have.
That's fine with me. And Charlotte, you are familiar and all three of you. Have already. The recodified bylaw and I think it's probably a good idea to put it into that format. So that it will fit with the recodification format. Do you agree with that, Charlotte?
Sure.
Okay, because that format is different from our current bylaw structure. It's clearer.
And Michaela and Tom have sent us a uh. An order that they would like to see followed for bylaws. So we would use both of those.
Right, and also I highly recommend Bob Ritchie's directions. How to structure the sentences, that kind of thing. Charlotte and I, as I said, are extremely familiar with that because we were dealing with it. When we were reviewing everything. So that would mean that Jim and John would have to familiarize themselves with it when you're working with it and structuring it. Okay?
Going to be a problem. Our objective is to get it to public hearings and if possible to town meeting in April if we can.
If we can, that would be fabulous.
Yeah. And.
Yes, Tom?
When we get to October 20th. We can talk a bit about bandwidth for town meeting, which has always been a concern of the board. How much can you bring to town meeting with the recodification?
Yeah, how do you do it? Right.
October 20, we'll talk more about that.
Okay. Okay, so moving on. Future agendas for pending applications. And. Tom, do you have anything to say to that if you're not frozen up? Nope. Okay. Any announcements tonight? Nope. I did not see any general correspondence. I'm assuming there is none. Is that correct, Tom? Okay, um. I don't know, you always say future agenda items, but we've already got those lining up. Jim?
I'm just wondering, when's the next time we're going to talk with Union Studios and about Davis Straits? Is that on a future agenda?
I have uh, got a couple of emails in from Union Studio today about what's going on in the interim. Uh, that I haven't had a chance to click on yet with the day that we've had. So we are continually working with Union Studios, even though we're not necessarily in front of the planning board.
Okay. Anybody else? Um, our next meeting is October 13. And we're carrying forward a number of things from last week's meeting and I'm assuming that there are a few other new things that'll be on it. Correct, Tom, or not?
Yes, ma'am. There's an application. Uh, as well.
Okay, and then Tom has been mentioning October 27th as looking at charter changes. And that's what, Tom? We're having horrible problems tonight. Does anybody mind if I adjourn the meeting at this point? It is 7:30.
Okay.
Send the second.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night, everybody.